So Rhonda, what do you suggest then? Because, because after going to the school today and seeing what would need to happen. And Laura, to your point earlier about employers, because I've been thinking a lot about that. Like, can we go to some of our larger employers and ask them if, you know, the Schreiber's and the Schneider's and to say like, how many of your parents work here? Right? Is there anything you could do or that you're not already doing? But
Yes, I would say that.
Hold on, let me finish first. Let me, let me, let me finish for a second. Your point, we're all feeling, we, we all have heard this. We are in an impossible situation right now. There is no good option. Anytime any one of us has come to this board meeting, I believe every one of us can come to the table and say, what is best for kids? There is no, there's no answer tonight on the table. That is what's best for kids and families. This is, this is a failure of the system from the highest level. And I'm not saying that to shove leadership or to the decision off of our plate, because here we are and we have to make it. And this is how it is deeply unfair that school districts over and over again have to basically step up and put everything on the line for their community. And we're going to do it tonight. But the issue is, is that after seeing at chapel today, Laura, Brenda, I don't know if you guys, what you thought about that. I cried. It was in a fourth grade classroom. I had my mask on and I was sobbing and I thought to myself, I'm glad I have a mask on. I don't want to send my nine-year-old there and it's not a child, it's not a student-centered space. And that's what's so frustrating about it is even if we sent everyone back, which everyone would like to do, it's, it, it's not possible for what it was to come back unless we basically say, we don't really, we're just not going to follow the guidelines. And so I hear you, but what, what is the other option?
Well, I was under the impression that blended was actually an option. I'm hearing it wasn't. I can't imagine that there aren't kids who would probably take that classroom versus what they're experiencing at home. Right? Because that classroom is safety for them. That classroom would also provide them some food and some semblance of somebody seeing that maybe they're being exposed to physical and sexual abuse. Maybe they're being trafficked. Maybe they're actually homeless. Maybe they're going through all these things, right? That we don't have the ability to read when they're not in front of us. And again, it is, right, it's not what the ideal situation is. But again, I'm thinking about the kids who would love to be in there rather than week after week after week after week. And so, but I guess going back to that, I was under the impression that in fact, if the vote fails with the recommendation for off-site virtual learning, that Plan B blended, there are families who still believe that. I'm not hearing that's even viable.
I, here's, listen.
It is viable, Rhonda. We can do anything, right? If you decided tonight that you wanted to send students back onsite, we could take students back onsite. We would just have to be willing to compromise in what we have been told is best practice for student-staff safety. So, you know, recognize that our job is to do, your job is to decide. So you decide and you tell us and we do. But what we do is dependent on what we have in terms of capacity. So if tonight you said no to offsite and you said no to blended, we would have to make onsite work. Right? We wouldn't be able to meet the spacing criteria. We wouldn't be able to meet the staffing criteria. We'd be unlikely to be able to meet the health criteria, but we would have to make it work. If you said that you want us to go to blended, we would make that work. We would come back to you in two weeks with a plan that would operationalize it. By then, we would hopefully know how many parents would choose to keep their children at home and how many parents would choose to send their children. And that would have a direct impact on how we would implement blended. So please don't think that we couldn't do it. We can do it. We just have to recognize that as Christina said, we have no good options in front of us. We will have to make compromises regardless of which choice we make.
So Steve, I'm gonna, Rhonda, I'm gonna jump in here for a second. And make an offer to any other board members, if you have anything else that you'd like to say or ask, and then we can come back. Rhonda, you've talked for the last eight minutes straight. I'm trying to keep everyone engaged.
I have a clarifying question about what was just stated.
Alright, ask your, ask your clarifying question and then we'll go back to somebody else.
Appreciate that. Thank you. When you said, when you stated that we could make the blended option work, we would have to reduce the CDC guidelines. Is that actually listed in the, in the plan that that's how that would work? So can people pull that document up right now and read that in the blended plan?
Rhonda, we don't know. We don't know because we don't know who would take advantage of the blended plan and who would take advantage of the offsite plan if that option was available to them. So no, we can't give you specifics on which compromises we would have to make. If you made that choice, then we would be able to do so most likely by the time we get to the next board meeting.
But so we, you're, so again, so I'm clear because we will be asked about this, right? By a lot of people, or at least I know I will. That would work. The blended option can work is what you're, was your, is what you're standing right now. Without hiring 400 teachers. Because that's what I heard you say prior or earlier.
We're telling you that given what we understand from the medical and the health professionals, we know what we need to do to comply with what they say is best practice. But if the board chooses not to move forward with that, makes an alternate choice, then our job is to operationalize that. That's what we do. We would have to make compromises. We would come back to you and share with you what those compromises are. But I do think one of the things that you need to understand and that we've talked about internally and when we talk about the best, bad choices, going to a blended model doesn't help parents who have childcare problems. They still need to find childcare three days a week. So when you talk about the heart-wrenching component of this, we know that these two choices put parents in an incredibly difficult situation. And we acknowledge that 100%. I said that right upfront. There are no good choices and every one of these choices has multiple adverse effects on our students, their parents, our staff and the community. Our job is to try to minimize those to the extent that we can. And with one of our guiding principles being health and safety, keeping students and staff safe is our first choice. And that's why we make the recommendation.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in here. Noah, do you just have a quick question? I'll let you go ahead of me a few. Two questions? Go ahead. You can ask two questions. No clarifying, no follow-ups.
No, no, okay. I'm sorry. No, I'm, okay. I have, I have like four minutes of rambling and then I'm done. But I don't know if you, where you want to put me. That's fine. Wherever you would like.
If you'd like to go in right here, I'll let you go and then I'll go after you.
My apologies. I'm done after this. I'm gonna just say everything that I've gotten. I'm gonna say everything I have and then I'm done. As to whether school is childcare or not, it's not, it's not meant to be, it's meant to be education, but it serves that secondary role and it's necessary to some people. I have a short little thing right now here and then I will be quiet and let you guys work. I'm speaking today as someone who believes that science must remain apolitical and when that's not possible, it must be nonpartisan. People are going to make assumptions about my and the board's political leanings based on what we believe is best for students, which is unfortunate. The fact that people are suddenly changing their beliefs about what public education is and how it is supposed to serve this community in the face of this pandemic is another one of the most frustrating things I've seen in looking at this issue. And I know it's worse for you guys who are elected. I'm not a politician and I have no vote tonight. What I am is a student and I have to recommend to the board what I believe is in the best interest of all of my fellow students. I understand the gravity of the situation and the multitude of considerations that the board has to take into account when voting tonight. I've done my best to talk to a diverse group of students within the district and I believe I've done so. I've asked questions and tried to understand why students believe what they did about reopening. From the students I have talked to, I strongly believe that the board's best course of action tonight is to reopen our schools. Virtual learning has not gone well for many students. Speaking for myself, in-person school went far better than virtual did. I'm in no way discounting the work that our teachers did in spring. They've had to adapt under extremely high stress and pressure from the public. And I'm saying that from the student perspective, there is generally much more success when meeting in person. I think this is well-known and most of the debate focuses on the safety of the schools. I believe that schools will cause some spread of the COVID-19 virus. I think it would be asinine to say that it won't. However, an environment where students are supervised and mostly wearing masks is better than the groups that despite many and overwhelming scientific evidence have formed in the general public anyway. I don't see a feasible solution to this virus. I hope I'm wrong. I really do. But I think the time required to develop a vaccine will actually create a novel coronavirus will be years and potentially decades. This is not me saying I want to send students, teachers, administrators or parents into a situation that can be dangerous. I don't support that. I'm saying that I think the coronavirus will spread almost the same regardless of what you guys vote tonight. And that closing schools should be used to keep the hospitals from being overwhelmed, not as a permanent measure. It should be used to reduce the rate of spread, not the total spread, which will remain the same. The point that school is going to look different is of course true. That does not mean that it is no longer worth returning to school or that virtual learning is just as good as meeting in person. Every student I talked to said that they would rather be in a school that looks extremely different than the one that they're used to. And then the one that they're used to, to continue with virtual learning. I understand that virtual learning is going to be more refined than the program used in spring and I know you guys have been hard at work at this. I understand that staff have been working. We recognize that. But no matter how hard everyone works, the main issue remains. Although some students succeed in online learning, many of them don't. If the board votes yes tonight, I do not see a situation where the schools can stay reopened for any real length of time. This is essentially a closure that will last for years. The effects that this will have, especially on parents who rely on schools to somewhere their children can go and be safe and fed during the day, are not worth delaying the inevitable spread of this disease. Voting yes looks good. It sounds like the safest option, but I do not see it actually providing for the safety of students anymore than just fully reopening would. I support giving students the option to take school online. Let the families that, let the families take school online if that works for them. But for the families and students for whom that is just not feasible, please reopen the schools. I ask that the board please vote no on this plan and approve students' learning in person. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Noah. I, I have some comments that I'm gonna share now. So I've spent my entire career in service to youth and have faced many difficult and courageous decisions with the best interest of children in mind, although certainly none have been as monumental as what's facing us here tonight. In speaking to one of my educational mentors, he said to me, you know, to look into my heart and do what I believe is best for kids and I'll be able to stick and sleep with that decision. But what makes this decision so difficult is that both of these options, I believe, are bad for children. And it goes against my nature to make a decision that I know is inherently bad for children. And to complicate things, I know that this decision is going to impact every single one of our 21,000 students differently. And so it's hard to think of each of those unique individuals that I have met in my different roles in the community and knowing how this is going to impact them. When I sit at the board table, I look solely through the lens of a board member and I try to take into consideration our entire system, setting my other personal and professional roles aside. However, in this instance, I cannot remove the lens of the most important role that I play and that's the role of a father. When I think about the upcoming school year, I think about my son and my daughter who are going into kindergarten and first grade and I feel angry, I feel confused, I feel frustrated, isolated, helpless, sad, just like many of the parents who have emailed us in our community. And I feel the exact same way. What I found it most difficult in reading those hundreds of emails is that I agree with almost everything that people have said to us. Children need routine and need social, regular interaction, social interaction. Yes, they do. The infection rate in our community is high. Yes, it is. Online learning is not as effective as in-person learning. That's correct. Kids are unable to social distance and won't wear masks. Yeah. I don't know how I'm gonna go to work. Yes. I'm afraid that myself or my child could die. Yes, that's a possibility as well. All of those things are true. In all of the feedback that I've received, there are three points that stick out to me most significantly. First, it's the educational environment that we're proposing sending our children back to. I saw it myself today and I know that it's not the student-centered place that we remember. My daughter's kindergarten class will not have a carpet for story time. There's no kidney tables for small group instruction. There's no warm hugs from her teacher at the start and the end of the day. My son will have no interaction with friends in the lunchroom. There's no high fives from his principal. There's no collaborative projects or manipulatives to help with his learning. The proposed in-person instruction will not be an environment that is conducive to a child's well-being. Second, the unstable state of our staffing situation related to the viral spread leaves our system erratic and prone to unannounced and unpredictable shutdowns. If your child's bus driver gets sick, there won't be coverage. If a teacher tests positive, you may find out that your student has to quarantine for 14 days at the drop of a hat and there won't be substitute teachers. And as our superintendent mentioned earlier, if 10% of our staff get in a building are sick, a school would close at the drop of a hat. This level of volatility would cause more disruptions to families because it would come without warning and without an ability to plan. Finally, people point to the low percentage of death in students as a safe reason to open. And maybe we don't have all the data on that and I'm not gonna quote an exact statistic, but let's imagine that it's one in 10,000. That may seem low, but it would also mean that two students this year in the Green Bay Public School District will die. And maybe this doesn't mean much to some of you because you think that probably won't be my kids. But in my view, they're all our kids and it could be my kids. So it's with a very heavy heart and with a full weight of, of the terrible decision that we have to make tonight that I'm going to support a virtual start to the school year. And I realize that other schools in our community can start in person or may plan to do that. And I hope they're able to do so successfully. And truly, it's my hope that we'll get information early in this process, maybe early in September that says, you know, I think we can do this. I, I hope that we start virtually and can get out of it as soon as possible and I have hopes that maybe it'll be September or October. But as much as I want our district to serve as a leader, in this instance, I would rather be a follower and see how others are able to respond because we don't know what this virus does to an open school. And I don't want to be the guinea pig that's out there first to find out how it impacts our kids or our staff. And so with everything that everyone has said tonight, I, I take that all into consideration. I've heard all of the feedback and it breaks my heart that we, we are in this position. But that's my stance and how I plan to vote tonight. Christina?
Thank you for that, Eric. Um, yeah, I just wanted to share a couple of closing thoughts as well. Thank you to everyone here tonight, my fellow board members for the conversation and for the work you've given. Thank you to Superintendent Merly, to the district staff, to his teachers, to the community for your work for showing up last night at the community forum. I know we are all working exceptional hours and taking on a tremendous amount of responsibility, adjusting to our new normal. Similarly to what Eric said, I have never faced a difficult decision like this in my life. Usually I can get to a place where I can make sense of it and I can move forward. And this is one of the things that has weighed the most heavily on me that I can remember. I've spent so much time reading comments from your hundreds of emails, I think 500 emails, Facebook messages and so forth. It's been a tremendous amount of work. I want to start by saying, and I mentioned this earlier, that we face, what we currently face is a massive failure and it's kind of an embarrassing failure. Right? We're the wealthiest nation in the world, but we can't seem to figure out a rational way to keep our families and districts safe while we mount a successful public health response to COVID-19. The reality for us on this call, for our parents and teachers and kids, it's not our fault. Simply put, as I said, we are put in an impossible situation. Parents are forced to work, sometimes in unsafe conditions because we don't have the public infrastructure to support their health and their economic security. Our teachers, many of whom have dedicated their lives to caring for their kids, their students are afraid of a situation where they might get sick or their students might sick. And they're also afraid of not being there for their students in the school. The worst victims of this situation is our kids. As Eric said, there's no good option. I'll say personally, last year in the spring, my kids did not thrive in the virtual option. My son was, quite frankly, a disaster. I remember calling his teacher and sobbing and saying, I'm not a school board member right now. I'm a, I'm a parent because I was so frustrated. And we were lucky, right? I was able to be home with them, to work from home, to be there, but still we struggled significantly. And I don't know how other families will do it, but I do feel that pain. I've been really shaken by the, the parent feedback that you all have provided. I would love for us to have a way where we could all go back in September and I will fight for that so that we, that can happen as soon as possible. But with Eric, I'm gonna vote for the motion tonight and there's three big reasons for me why. One is we have to follow the CDC guidelines, the Wisconsin mask mandate and the Brown County public health guidance. That means that what we saw today, it's not going to be the same learning environment. It's not student-centered. It's not student-friendly. It's not trauma-informed. It's not, you know, it's not everything that I think makes our district great. And as I said, it was really emotional for me because I think we're not perfect, but we've done a lot of great work to make it student-centered and to train our teachers. And it really goes against everything that we have been working on, right? From kinesthetic learning, hands-on manipulatives and so forth. The other thing that really weighs on me is if there is an outbreak in our school, it will disrupt entire systems immediately. We'll have to self-isolate teachers and families and students. It could have a rippling effect in other places of employment. And so it really could exasperate an already rising case, a number of rising cases in our, in our county. And then that could really become an issue with our staffing, as we talked about earlier, where people will have to quarantine and again, it could really just not even create an issue with employment with our district, but with other employers as well. I want to just close by saying that I'm very serious, I have very serious reservations, many of which were shared tonight. I want to commit to the community that these are the things I'm going to continue to elevate and prioritize. And that is students with IEPs and those that need tutoring and special services, working to ensure that people who need in-person supervisory options for their kids have it. That is a significant priority for working families and single families. Ensuring the meal service, ensuring that we have a whole child focused on our virtual learning, looking at environmental options for classrooms. And then of course, like continuously looking at the data to make sure that we make the best decision possible so that we can move to the hybrid and then the in-person model as fast as we can. I just want to say that, you know, this work is exhausting and it's going to require continuous review and accountability, questioning, assessment and replanning. I'm committed to doing it. I think, I know everyone else is as well. I know people will be upset with the vote tonight and perhaps with me. But it is the one that I feel that I can go to bed feeling the best I can, knowing that there's no good option. And I will continue to work as hard as I can for everyone in this district. Thank you.
Well said, Eric and Christina, in the interest of not repeating a lot of what you said, I'll, I'll try to keep my, my comments shorter. I agree with many of what you said. This has been an agonizing decision. Christina, I agree with you that the, the people, the students and families I'm most concerned about, if we go offsite, are, are the families who this is going to be such a hardship for. Eric, I agree with you on the instability of, of starting in person and then having to, with no notice at all, swing back. I also think that we, we just don't know everything about how this virus affects children. There's new research again coming out almost every day that, that, you know, contradicts other research. So it's, it's just really hard to be confident at this point. And I'm, I'm not interested in, in being the guinea pig because in my head and what I, I keep going back to is we can, like Christina and Eric have described, we can, we can continue to replan and move forward and take individual cases and find ways to, for solutions and help, help work with students who are having socially emotional struggles and, and all of those things. We, we have the ability to do that. But if we start school and we find out that it causes a big surge in our community, we can't stop that surge. That surge is gonna happen. We've seen that in, in many other states where, who have very, very high infection rates. And, and so I, I'm, I'm in favor of following the gating criteria. I think that if we meet that criteria, that we give serious consideration to coming back blended, knowing that in another month, we may end up back offsite. We may get to the point as a state where our numbers are so high that, that all the schools are, are closed down. Those are all the unknowns in the future, but I feel pretty confident or comfortable, I guess, with choosing the offsite option to start. Again, everyone's echoed, it's a, you know, none of these choices are good and it's going to affect a lot of people in bad ways. But I know we have a, we have a great staff. We've had teachers working all summer on their own time, finding and looking for ways to engage students online, looking for just whole hosts of various strategies and things to help engage their students better. And I know that that work will continue. They'll continue working harder. We've, well, our virtual instruction will, will be improved. I know our district teams have been working on that all summer. But I, and I guess I would, if, if people are having frustrations about what's going on in, in any of these scenarios, I would encourage you again to reach out. I know I really appreciate all the feedback we've gotten, phone calls and emails and notes on our website and things like that. And I think if you have ideas or concerns, you know, this is, this is not something any, any school, anybody alive right now has ever had to deal with. So I think, you know, ideas, ideas will be welcome. And that's all, I'll stop there. Thanks.
Andrew?
Okay, so I guess I'll save closing comments for the end, but I do have, yeah, I'm going to have at least, at least one amendment which I have, which I have ready. Do you want me to, do you want me to screen? I can read it and if there's any questions, I can screen share it or do you want me to just screen share it?
Why don't you just read it and if it feels like it's overly complicated?
Okay, I moved, yep, I moved to amend the motion by adding the following where grammatically appropriate. And that the district provide and staff extended learning support students, extended learning support sites for students and families who need them during periods of offsite and blended learning.
So Andrew, that motion just adds that we will do our best to, what is, what is the intent of the motion? Just so if you put it in.
That we will, yeah, that we will not rely on community partners, that we won't wait and see that we are committing to provide and staff extended learning support sites. I don't know where they are, where they would be. I don't know where, what exactly they would, what they would look like. I'm, I'm thinking of the Scottsdale, Arizona model, though much too small, that has much too small the number of students it serves, but it's a start. They have 500 spots where kids, at least elementary kids can go. Should probably wait and see if my, if, see about a second on the motion, then I can explain, I guess, a little more of the rationale.
Is there a second to Andrew's motion?
Second.
Okay, so yeah, I guess we're, one of the things and like, and I'm not saying we didn't, we didn't ask and then things, things move fast and the, you know, things are moving fast. I get that. But I just, and maybe, maybe I missed something. Maybe I missed something in what the, where the superintendent was going with, with things before. And if that's the case, I want to hear it again if I missed it. You know, these hundreds of families talking about the devastating circumstances because for, because the way it's ended up here, there isn't a, there, there isn't a secondary support system when this, when this happens. And other, other countries came up with one and we really, really didn't. So it's, so it falls to us. To look at meeting the needs of families for backup, backup options during this period of blended learning through a, through a daycare, childcare model lens, right? Eric, you said you talked to, you know, you talked to the Boys and Girls Club. They have, they're doing some great. Right, Eric, you said you talked to, you know, you talked to the Boys and Girls Club. They have, they're doing some great things in groups of. Groups of nine kids with, with one staff and that's, that's good. And if they're able to continue and if they're able to make that full. Full-time or bigger chunks of a day or something. With their one-on-nine staff ratios, that's. That's good, but I think we need to commit to doing something. More to getting much outside of the daycare box and Steve and I talked about this and there's, you know, there's regular, there's regulatory problems. And issues if you create a daycare, I'm not talking about creating daycares. I'm talking about. Extended, extended learning support sites, so. I don't know, so we find, find a spot with some. We find a spot with some open space. We take some offices at D O B where a staff maybe has chosen to. Work remote and I, I, I know that we have staff who are working remote and I'm glad that we're an employer that is being a leader and letting staff work remote. Maybe there's some opportunity there where. We can have, we could have a pair or someone with kids working. On things for their school with their classmates if we're online or on the, on the other days if they're blended, if they're streaming what their class is doing. This is. And, and I'm gonna, I'm absolutely gonna be working non-stop to be part of the. Part of the solution to whatever this is regardless of. Regardless of the vote. I'm absolutely gonna be there. Someone asked me, are you gonna be there on September first if? Schools open and I said whenever they open, I'll be there on the first day following social distancing and proper practices. I'll just keep it to the amendment for now rather than my closing comments. I'd, I'd like to see what happens with this amendment because. I, I'm gonna sleep better, I'm gonna sleep better tonight if I know that we. We committed to doing more not, and not just to waiting and seeing what the community partners came up with.
So Andrew, I'll just, I'll respond for myself personally, then I'll go to Christina. You and I talked about this. A little bit. I agree with you in theory. And I, I like the sentiment and I would strongly implore our administration, I know they already have, but I would reiterate it here. That would want them to pull out all the stops they can to try to help families and provide support as much as possible. I know they've already. Given some of those suggestions. I feel like the, the motion is, is a little bit vague and. You know, tough for the administration to read and react and what does that exactly mean? So I would be more inclined, I would be inclined to deny the motion. But make the point with the administration. To make an effort there. There's a ton of questions that you, that, that in your model about insurance, who is liable? Who, who does it? What, you know, how those sites work? Are we staffing them? Are we guaranteed? So again, I don't disagree with the premise. But right here at the board table, if you're asking me to vote on it without having all of those answers, you know, maybe it's something they can bring back to us on the fifteenth. So that's my stance on it. I don't, I don't disagree with you philosophically, but I wouldn't support the motion as a part of this.
Eric, can I go?
Yeah, oh, sorry Christina, yeah.
That's okay. Andrew, so I know in the past there have been some amendments made because we want to be very clear about where the boards, the board stands. And to make sure that it becomes right, that the work is done. If I'm concerned, I'm a hundred percent committed to the supervision component to exactly what you're saying, but I'd like to learn more about what it could look like, what the cost is going to be. So that we can make sure we have, that we're catching as many families and students as possible. So would you be okay if instead of passing an amendment, we? I don't, I don't know if this makes sense. Sorry, it's been a weird day. If we asked Steve and his administrative team to bring it back in two weeks with a recommendation. Knowing that it is not a directive of a board, the board, but a strong ask. Would that get you?
I'm not interested in anything short of a board directive.
Okay, could we, I mean, but do we, we could, could we give a directive without? Passing an amendment or is that a parliamentary issue?
We could probably, I mean, it could probably be a separate. Motion if this, if this fails, I think that would fall well within what we're. Posted for and it could be a separate. It could be a separate motion after the main motion, I would, I would think. I'm not gonna withdraw my motion, but if it, if it fails and we go back and say I. You know, that we're directing the district to investigate district-run opportunities like this. I would feel better about that than I would about nothing, for sure.
What was the, can you just, or Beth, can you repeat back what Andrew had said originally?
Andrew, I'm actually hoping that you can say it one more time.
Josh, do you want to have me screen? Give me a screen share?
I think you should have permissions to share. Yep.
Andrew, is this meant to cover during the traditional school day hours?
Yeah. Yes, because I think outside. I'm, this is actually, this is actually kind of a, I think this is kind of a. This is a softer motion actually than I would usually make, not a harder one because. I, I didn't say all. I'm not, I'm not saying that every single person who. Says that, no, you have to, you have to. Give this to us is automatically going to get it, although I, I do, I would see this being. This is something I would put some money into and try to spread it pretty, you know, pretty far and wide. But this would be. Yeah, this isn't, this isn't wraparound. This is, this is school. I'm presuming whatever families had in place. Before COVID for between three and five or whatever, this is not, this is not an attempt to. Have us make daycares. It is, it is extended. School sites. I think there's models. I think some of the big five are doing some kinds of. Of things like this. I intentionally did not say that it would only be something you could sign up for, for every day or that it only could be. Drop-in, drop-in might make a lot of sense for the, for the big kids. As needed, drop-in for a kid who can jump on the city bus. So this is a deliberately. Fairly soft but clear direction that we're going to do more than let community partners expand. Their offerings, which they cannot do. You know, they cannot do that at no cost to, to parents, although they might, it might work great in some cases.
Andrew, question, sorry. I understand your intention is to have this be a bit softer in your words that you use. But to me, it's so broad that it actually is concerning because I, could it, could it be interpreted then that? Those who need them and that it's so broad that it could be. Considered in-person learning by some. Which is not the intent.
Do we have to provide transportation to these sites or so then it becomes inequitable if we say, hey, it's open and available, but if you don't have a car, then you can't get there. Let's, my preference is to send this, I mean, let's take a vote. Here, I think we understand what Andrew is asking for. Let's take the vote. If it passes, we'll go forward with it. If not, I'm still interested in bringing this, you know, putting this on the team's radar.
And I do think we should transport to it actually, I mean, but there could be different models. I think if you're doing. If there's a. I think there's times you, you would want to, I think there's. I think maybe you couldn't always, I'd, I'd hope that members of the community would be. You know, selective if we're, if we're putting this out there and, you know, we don't have as much capacity as we want. I trust that people who really. You know, don't need the transportation aren't going to ask for it, but we might, might provide some. I think it's a lot easier for the bigger kids who can. You know, who could probably use a, a city bus. So again, I'm not. I can't go back to the public and say, you know, that I didn't at least try to make it an official. An official requirement, which I think is stronger as an amendment to the motion than it is to a separate motion with the board directive, although that's still, that's still much. Better than. I guess I'm, I am done with the concept of. The words of the board meeting also counting because they're in the minutes. I don't, I don't believe that. I don't believe they count, so. They're just not official. So let's do this and if it fails, if someone wants to make it as a separate motion, then okay.
Can I ask just a quick clarifying question? Because I do agree that there's, I know you said you think it's clear. I'd say on my end from an implementation standpoint, I struggle.
Oh, I didn't say clear. I said it's, it's soft, but go ahead.
So what does it mean when you say who need them?
Yeah, I didn't say, so I, I didn't say all. Okay, I'll tell you what, I will. It's a, it's a parliamentary shortcut, but if, if no one objects. Eric, you could ask if there's unanimous consent to let me strike that.
Is everyone okay with Andrew striking that?
In fact, I'll strike this. Because it's not for the non-students in the family to, they might, they might be helpers at it, but it's not for them. Okay, so if there's unanimous consent, I'll hit the delete and then my amendment will just be this.
Okay.
So can I ask again for clarifying questions? So extended learning support sites, essentially, are you looking at? From when wraparound starts today to ends today? So you're, you're looking for us to provide. And now without an operational definition in front of it, so students means our children, so that's twenty-one thousand children. So you're looking for us to potentially provide. Extended learning support sites for up to twenty-one thousand students from the current. Beginning time for wraparound service to the current end time for wraparound service, which could be six AM to six PM?
Oh, no, 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 no. This is not daycare. This is, this is school day stuff. If there's, if there's wraparound sites that are. You know, receiving either direct payment or, you know, state payments or twenty-one C payments, I think. I could see maybe some of these extended learning sites. You know, maybe, maybe a daycare is picking kids up from the, you know, southwest side. Extended learning site. I believe it or not, okay, I actually thought I was doing like a. Superintendent dream amendment here because it's more philosophical and doesn't have a lot of operational strings on it, but maybe I. Maybe I blew that?
Andrew, how do we, how do we avoid the, with this? How do we avoid the exact same issues that we were gonna run into with a blended model? Or just going, I guess, I guess what, what you're saying is we're going to open up and staff. To staff learning during the school hours and I'm, I'm not seeing where this is different than having school because if I'm a parent and. If I'm a parent, I want my kid to be in school on site, I'm gonna do this and we know we cannot open our school safely.
Yep, but you couldn't have, yep.
If twenty-one thousand students choose this, if they need this, we are right back to where we are today where we cannot meet CDC guidelines to open our schools safely.
Yep, I would, I would imagine a likely result of, of this motion or of a separate board directive of the same thing. A likely result of this would be the superintendent coming back to us in a week or two and saying, here's where there's open space. And we could, we think we could probably, we could probably swing about. Twenty-three hundred spots or sixteen hundred spots or. I want to do way better than Scott, Scottsdale. Eight for effort, but five hundred for twenty-one thousand. They prioritized, Scottsdale prioritized to. Essential workers came first and, and et cetera. I would imagine that we would hear back from the administration that there is some number well short of twenty-one thousand, which would be the capacity that we could handle here. The reason it's different than school is that we could have. We could have a safe place for kids where. One, one adult is supervising more kids because the kids are. Generally working on their own help, stuff with a little adult help here and there. I'm just, I'm not okay with leaving community partners to handle this. But yes, I know there are, okay, I know there's not going to be twenty-one thousand available spots, not that people would want. Them all anyways.
How do you pick?
Well, again, I intentionally would leave it to, I, you know, Scottsdale has. Essential worker categories come. Essential worker categories come first. Situations that would support a, a staff member being able to work instead of going on a leave of, of absence comes second after essential workers. There, there's criteria.
Andrew, is the intention that students would be there five days a week?
Maybe, or four if there's a non-instructional day, could be. In Scottsdale, you have to commit to. They're asking people to commit to a site for all of the days, but I think the bigger the kid gets, the more it could potentially be a, a drop-in kind of thing.
All right, let's. Can I, oh, I'm sorry, I can't see everybody with Andrew's screen.
Everyone, I'll stop, yeah.
Okay, Brenda, let's go and then see if we can take the vote.
Okay, I'm, I'm not interested in making an amendment. I'm, I think our. Steve and his teams have expressed similar concerns with a lot of families who are going to need variety of help. I'm more interested in giving them a directive to find solutions rather than directing one solution in a, in a board amendment. Because there may be other solutions besides extended learning sites. I don't disagree with you, Andrew. I think that that can be one solution. I also, to have a place where kids can come work on their virtual classrooms, work online in, with their classrooms. In, in a building, but I, and I also heard that.
That is an example, that's.
What?
That's what that is.
Exactly, but I don't, I think there might be other, other possibilities, other solutions. So I don't want to just, I don't want to tunnel vision the, the administrative team to say, this is the only thing you can look at now because the board has demanded you do that. When I, there might be creative solutions to, to this too. So I'm, I'm not disagreeing in your, in what you're asking for because I think it's, it's a good idea, but it may not be the only idea. And I would trust that if we give a directive tonight, Steve, that he will take that back to his team and possibly at least come back in two weeks with some preliminary thoughts. And I also, I just, I also want to say that I, I heard Steve say that this is something that we are working on with our community partners. And I didn't hear him say that we're depending on them to do something. So I see this as a, you know, it's a, a team mutual effort. For, for our district and our community partners to work together.
Rhonda?
I think the reason why Andrew is proposing this amendment and is asking for something more concrete is because so many times since I've been on the board, he's actually proposed amendments that never went anywhere. So he's looking for something that is a little bit more. Permanent or that will have some accountability.
And I don't feel like that's there in that motion.
Okay, so how, so how can we make that happen then?
Well, I, I get, I get where this is gonna go and if, if the motion fails and gets replaced at the end of this with a motion directing the administration to investigate district-run extended learning sites, that's not too bad. But. If, if this didn't. I, I guess I was just sensing too much of a risk that. The supervision piece is daycare and we don't do that because we're not licensed for that and it's not what we do. And so therefore we have to reach out to our partners who would valiantly work to increase capacity within their staffing levels and their, their means. And a lot of people would. And a lot of people would, would miss that. You know, would miss that vote. So, but if the amendment's gonna fail and this is gonna happen anyways, then fine, I just table, unless I see like a, a court ruling somewhere that, that you know, table consensus, round the table consensus counts as action taken by a body, which I'm sure it doesn't, some things just have to be done a little more clear, so.
All right, Beth, do we call, so wait, do we have to vote on the amendment first? Okay, so Beth will take a roll call and this is your vote on Andrew's amendment.
Warren?
Aye. Oh, no, Nate, no.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
No.
Sit Nakow?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Shelton?
No.
Brandon Huber?
No.
Andrew, do you want to give another motion with the directive?
We, he would do that afterwards because we have, now we have the, the original motion is on the table.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't, I'm, I'm I'm stuck on whether or not to try to do an amendment here, but we're left with this. So now we're left in this situation where if we, if we change nothing, we have, I like this positivity metric, which I, actually my bring up concerns about the positivity metric happened to get me out like some very quick thank you responses from people who trust me are very, very, very far apart politically, so that's interesting. And maybe, maybe it's a sign of hope, but there's, it's a positivity, the positive testing metric and with Noel, I thought maybe a healthcare person would be here to talk about, about why on that metric. I don't like the idea of, I, I like people knowing that there's gonna be some kind of blended when we reach, even if it's not a, a, the metric that I would prefer. It, it is a weird position to not have that healthcare person to, to discuss this, this metric with and ultimately although I don't think it's, I don't think it's the right metric. I don't think it's the, I mean, it's not a horrendous metric, but it's one I want to I, I don't want to stay on this ship for too long with this particular one unless we get clear evidence for it. I'm concerned though that the, the original motion says, I, I still don't understand what the original motion as written says about what happens with the 5% the 5% metric. Let's say it is, I have nothing better to offer, so it's at least gonna start out as being a 5% positive test metric. I still don't know what that means. And when people ask me what it means, I don't know what to say. And I don't know what it means when we reach five, if we reach 5% before September 1st, which we pro, I think there's a reasonable chance that we will. What is, I still don't know what that means.
So I can offer that I, I, we selected 5% based on recommendations from external experts and we don't have people on our team to make that determination. And that the intention is that we would develop with that grading, gating criteria, gating timeline that we would bring back to you on August 17th that would spell out what happens when, if, if the off-site model is the one that the board selects. If the board selects a blended model, then we would bring that gating criteria back that would have a timeline to move from blended to onsite.
Christina?
If we, in a month, determine that there was a better gating criteria or better numerical value that we were looking at, would we have to, we would have to have a new separate motion to then vote on that as the new criteria?
Since it's included in this motion, you would.
Okay, so I mean, Andrew, do you have a better option for what we have? I mean, it's not perfect, but nothing's perfect.
I thought of, I, I mean, I, I think we can, I think we can get one. I don't think we're gonna get one tonight and I thought of, I mean, I, I think it should be, yeah, I think it should be based on positive case counts, but I don't know enough to say how many positive case counts, so. I, I guess maybe we'll have to stay with. Me, so I, I hope in two, I hope in two weeks. So, so Steve, you're saying that if we did, you would be, you would be coming back in two weeks saying that where, like, okay, this is the day, this is the point at which we check out, we check for the 5%. And this is how we make sure it wasn't a single tiny dip to 5% that didn't really mean it. Whether that's three in a row for whatever, but the focus would be on the 5% metric, but you certainly, if you found a better metric or if the county helped you find a, a better one by the 17th, you certainly wouldn't be shy about sharing that with us and I'll be part of the search for the, the metric too. Ultimately, I, I, I guess I won't, I won't offer, I won't offer an amendment based on it because it's not, it's not gonna, it's not gonna change my, my vote on the motion anyways and I'm this time I'm convinced that I, I think we'll find a better one. I think everyone wants to find a better one if there's a better one. And nobody wants to be in the weird situation where if a lot of people get sick, but even more line up to test, that it somehow looks like a fake okay. And then people are angry when we say, no, we still can't, can't open. So I'll just, I'll just say a couple of things and then I'll, I'll stop. I'm, I'll be done and ready to vote. But I, I just want to say a few, a few things. You know, I'm, I'm on, I'm on board with doing whatever I can to help with this situation regardless of the, the split vote that's gonna happen tonight. And, and in the end, although what I, I, I can't vote for something that leaves, that leaves me having to, no other choice but to say, I don't know to so many, so many families that are worried about what's going to happen. There, there's a few things I can say that I, I know. I know that the virtual learning this time, which is our curriculum, it is, it has been under development, it has been planned, it is not crisis planned like we had to and did very well in last March. When the goal, and I, I told anyone who was listening this, if we, whatever we could deliver, even just okay, even to deliver something, that was important then. Now delivering a curriculum that we can transition back into, you know, back and forth if we have to, to, from blended to offsite to onsite, I'm, I'm confident that, I'm confident that we can do that. I'll be continuous to share ideas about it, but the, the virtual will be, the virtual will be much better. One thing that is, I don't think ever officially someone came right outside a board meeting. There, there is one thing that, and I, so I don't, I don't think that, although I wasn't able to go today, I saw the video, I talked to people who were there. There is somewhat of a spectrum of how far you go on the social distancing versus how bad it becomes for kids and that balance will, that balance will have to be found. But I think that, you know, I, now Noah had been talking primarily to, you know, to older kids, of course, but you know, they expressed a preference for, you know, we're gonna suck it up for, for anything to get back to, to school. And, and that's a, that's a great thing to hear. We will suck up anything to get back to school. I mean, that's gotta, that, that feels great. I think that, but the part that was missing here that I did get from some people in the public is please encourage use of outdoor class meetings when possible. And one thing that takes kids out of that very sterile looking situation, and we probably have at least a couple of months where this can happen on many days, you can take them outside and have a circle with us. It's just, it's gonna be a bigger circle, right? But you can actually have your circle time outdoors with social distancing, so it's a big circle. So I'm assuming that, you know, that opens things up a lot and can make it a lot better. We just have to give the, the, make sure that they have the green light to use that. And I do think we'll find a way, and I, I thought about, I thought about motions and amendments and they became too complex for me to write them down, but everything I've heard, I do have an expectation that, that some, some services, we're, we're not under a, we aren't under a lock the building door order anymore like we may have been in the past. And so I'm optimistic that there will be some opportunities if for those, you know, and it probably, probably starts with IEPs or emergency situations and emergency meeting with the school social worker or something. I'm hoping those things can all, all happen. And I am, I'm also very hopeful and I, I think, I think maybe two weeks is even too long, but I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll know, we'll be able to know more and continue to roll more out for families. I'll be part of that process. So thank you.
All right, Brenda?
Just have a very quick question for Steve. Yeah, and your report, your Monday report of the infection rate and thing, there, there's another chart that shows new cases per 100,000 people. And just for, when you come back in two weeks, I'd be interested in hearing either from you asking others or, or somebody from your medical team, a health, healthcare team to, to explain why the, the transmission rate is better than the new case rate. Just because, and again, I, you know, like Andrew said, it, the, the percent of positive tests can vary depending on how many people have been tested.
Sure, I can definitely look into that with the team.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So just bringing us back to the original motion that was made by Christina, seconded by Brenda to start, begin the school year virtually, Beth?
Can we read the whole thing again, Eric, or can, can someone, just, just the public who might be tuning in now?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Let's see if I can pull it up here.
I have it. Do you want me to just read it?
I, I've got it. Go ahead if you've got it.
Okay, the, the motion on the table is that the administration's recommendation that instruction begin on September 1st, 2020 and a primarily off-site instructional model with exemptions from, for individual students, free and appropriate public education requirements. And that the model be reviewed on a weekly basis using the gating criteria of a 14-day trend of 5% or less of Brown County COVID-19 tests being positive, positive as presented be approved.
Second. Oh, we already did.
We already had this, like, yep, thanks.
Sorry, it's been, it's been a while since we did that procedurally.
That's why I was like, we need to read that again.
Beth, if you could take a vote, please.
Lee, Becker?
No.
Shelton?
Aye.
Sit Nakow?
No.
Warren?
Aye.
Brandon Huber?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Right, motion passes five to two. Brings us to the second item back to the agenda.
So I have a motion under the same item. I, I move to direct the administration to investigate extended learning support options for students.
Second.
Beth?
McCoy?
No.
Sheldon?
Yes, aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Sit Nakow?
Can you, can you explain a little bit? Can you just clarify what, what's going on? I'm not following.
So the amendment, the amendment to put it into the motion that we passed, the amendment that would have based that the district must provide and staff some, that failed.
Right.
And now it's a motion directing the administration to investigate this. So it's requiring this option to be on the table and investigated.
Oh.
So it means that the, means the admin team has to look into it.
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Brandon Huber?
Aye. Right, pass six to one. All right, so that takes us to leasing cup of joy. Superintendent Merle, I know that we've talked about this, we had a discussion, open session. Do you have anything else for us before we look for a motion?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Eric?
Yes?
Um, I'd like to move that the board authorized administration to enter into a lease agreement for the building located at 232 South Broadway Street, Green Bay, Wisconsin for $4,000 per month with $2,000 per month credit toward the purchase price. During the first year of the lease and 1,500 a month credit toward the purchase price during the second year of the lease as presented be approved.
A second.
Any discussion? Rhonda?
Um, thanks. Yeah, I, again, looking at what just happened, knowing the hardships that our community is going to experience because of the decision that was made, knowing we will have quite a few buildings with space available and we will have parking spaces as well. For all the reasons we've discussed in the past, I absolutely cannot imagine that we would take a dime, no matter what percentage of the, of the budget it is, and we would put it towards another building. I think it's political suicide. And when it comes to anything in the future for a referendum for our district to do this right now. But I'm also curious and I'm interested in knowing because if you look at the lease, there's a lot in there. We're responsible for maintenance, releasing a building, but yet we're responsible for maintenance, upkeep, repair. It says, again, leasing a building, we're responsible for that. We're also responsible for the building as is. So regardless of the situation, we are being asked to take this on as an expenditure and we're doing it as is. And responsible for all of the, the upkeep, maintenance, repair. We're also responsible for any taxes incurred, which is probably not even gonna happen, but we're responsible for the build out, the operational costs. So, so you know, I'm assuming this doesn't end at $4,000, right? The expenditure doesn't end there. We're responsible for the signage. We're responsible for so many things in a building that we're leasing in a time during a global pandemic when we are going to not be occupying so many of our 42 buildings. So I would like us to think about what, what kind of tone deaf decision this would be if we were to, in fact, move forward with it because we have a lot of significant needs that are coming to the table. And we have a lot of expenditures to make sure that we support families and staff and kids coming, moving forward. So I cannot imagine a worse time to take this on and to agree to do this because number one, we don't need the space. We have it. Number two, we don't need the parking spaces. We have it. So I, again, looking through the lease, and I don't know if anyone did, the operational costs, what are they? Who, who takes on a leased building as is and agrees to repair it and upkeep it? I, I, I don't think anybody sitting here would do that in their own personal life, so. I'm gonna vote no. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Andrew?
So it would be, it could be a good candidate for part of it, could be one of the extended learning sites. So there's, there's that, but also. would be, it could be a good candidate for part of it, could be one of the, uh, extended learning sites. So there's, there's that, but also I, I think, um, we have a situation here where if this was, if this was a straight purchase, I would say absolutely not. I think here we were able to get, we were able to get terms where there's a purchase price below the market price of the building, well below the market price of the building if it were listed. And we have right of first refusal, we have, um, we have this credit towards a future purchase that we can do, that we have right of first refusal to do and we don't have to do. So there's just enough, there's enough in it for us that there's enough positives to, to push me over the yes, the yes bar on this one. Since we can walk away from this and I would have been a hard no on a, on an outright purchase. I just think there's too many good factors. We were able to negotiate into this arrangement to, that I think there's a lot of positive and if there isn't enough positive, we can walk. So that's, that's my map.
Yeah, and I just, I mean, this is my first, like, property thing on the board. But I, I mean, I agree when we initially talked about this, th- this would have been a horrible time to purchase property. We just don't know where we're going to be in a year or two years with the people working. I don't know that we're ever going to go back, you know, as a country to business as usual, where we will have everybody in that district office, but we just don't know. I'll be honest, my biggest concern with this is that building is right on top of our district office. And I'm really concerned with what, who could purchase it. I don't want another bar on top of the DOB and I don't want an adult bookstore there. As a parent, if, I wouldn't want my kid coming to a school board meeting on a Monday night in person because we will be back in person again if that was a popular bar. So, I mean, given the fact that we're leasing and we have that option to step back, if we, we get there in two years and we don't need it, we can step back from that, but I think we can find uses for it now. And like I said, Mike, I'm concerned with what it could be.
Bon, can it, can you clarify though that, um, have you heard that there's potential for it to be a bar or on an adult bookstore, I think is what you said. Have you heard that that's actually on the table? Because I-
No. No, I haven't. But don't we have, don't we have a bar in the DOB building now? I mean, isn't there a bar adjacent to the DOB property?
Actually inside the DOB building.
Yeah, I, I don't think that would be a, a good choice given the purpose of what we do there. And like I said, I wouldn't be comfortable having um, one of my kids going to a meeting at the DOB at night if that is what it was. And that's always a possibility. With right of, right of, what, with right of first refusal, we, we don't run the risk of that and it's worth it for me. I'm done, sorry.
Yep, Laura and then Christina.
Um, my position on this lease is that, um, I think that controlling the property around the DOB is something that, oh, any well-run business in the city would understand. Any well-run business would give city a serious consideration to either purchasing or as in this case, having control over what that property is used for. Uh, not having control is how you end up with four bars within just a few yards of a, a building that children and families and staff, uh, are coming and going all day and, all night. Uh, I don't know if some of you remember, but just a couple of years ago, there was just a horrific assault um, that happened near the back door of that bar that is right south of our, of our building. Um, and that back door spills into our parking lot. You know, those are the kind of things that go along with those kind of establishments. And having control over the usage of that building and also being able to potentially offer a more comfortable um, location for families to register and to connect, as I know Pete Ross mentioned, um, to services that, um, additional services that they might need. It just seems like a prudent decision for, and I'm going to be voting in favor of the two-year lease.
Christina?
I'll keep it short and sweet. Good idea, wrong time. Everyone's opinion on this, I'll be voting it down.
Uh, if there's no other comments, so go ahead, Brenda.
I understand Christina, your point, but I think that it's, um, we arranged it so that we have minimal financial input to, to leasing instead of purchasing. I think in three years when we're, we're back up and, and, uh, um, working like we have, I think the one thing about the parking that hasn't been pointed out is that, um, some, a lot of times we have, uh, teachers and staff that come into our buildings for professional development that lasts longer than two hours. And so parking on the street is not an option for them without getting a ticket because all of the parking that's on the street around the DOB is, is two-hour parking. So I just think it's, I, I get the financial implications at this point, but I just feel like it would be really short-sighted and we would be sorry in three years if we, um, it didn't, uh, didn't lease the building.
I have one more question.
Yep.
What is the operational cost? Like what, a- aside from the, the four thousand dollars, like what, would it actually, um, let's say you want it to be a parent welcome center. What are we looking at as far as operational costs?
Well, I think that, oh, go ahead, Steve.
As I say, I don't have a projection on that. I don't know if Pete has a projection on it, but, uh, um, that's definitely something we can bring back here.
Yeah, I mean, are you, I would imagine some of it is electricity, water. Um, and we, I know that we've talked about we wanted to stick a minimal amount into it until we decide that, uh, if, if we decide we want to purchase it, but-
But what's a minimal amount? Like, what, there needs to be a number. We're in a pandemic, we are literally removing support from community members and we don't have amounts in front of us, not for a vote.
The way that, uh, that, that, uh, Mike Stengel spends his budget on facilities that doesn't come to the board for, for approval. So it would go into Mike's, uh, budget that he already has. We're not increasing his budget to have more money to pay to fix this building.
But we're decreasing the budget, uh, that we have to actually support our families. And so that's why it's important to think about what that number is.
The, I, the, the money, this money is gonna go to support our families in my opinion. So it's just shifting it from one level of support to another. So that's my opinion. All right, Beth, um, you could call the vote, please.
Becker?
Aye.
Nakow?
No.
Smith?
Aye.
Brandon Huber?
Aye.
Shelton?
No.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Right, pass five to, uh, last thing on our special board meeting is the consent agenda items, if I could have a motion to approve.
I move that the consent, uh, as listed be approved.
Becker?
About discussion, Beth?
Shelton?
Aye.
Smith? Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Brandon Huber?
Aye.
Sit Nakow?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
And Becker?
Aye.
Pass seven zero. All right, um, somebody help me out. Do I need a motion to adjourn this meeting? Yes, thanks, Steve. Uh, looking for a, a motion to adjourn the special board meeting.
So move.
Second.